Okay, thanks to, as we blended in from the work session into the regular meeting, I'll call the regular meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Pecosin City Council for Monday, September 25th. We just closed out our work session, which we went through a deep financial report, took a five-minute break, and now I'll lead you in the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day and for the many blessings we have received in our city. As we move forward on the various issues this evening, guide us. As we serve the community in the coming days, strengthen us to do what is right, and Lord, we especially ask that we stay mindful of those in need. Tonight again, we ask for your blessing and presence, that it be felt by those who serve our country, as well as our public safety employees who serve our nation, our state, and our city. Guide and protect them and bring comfort to their families as they protect all of us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Conclusions to the delight of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We have a special presentation on the agenda this evening, and I'll ask for Deputy Chief Bryant and Mr. Straight to come to the podium. I understand that you are going to brief us on, and I know people, I hope that people have been paying attention to evacuation zones and the like, with all the bad weather around the nation, I think it's important that we bring this to you this evening. So Randy, anything from your side?
We've got some real good news, and the good news is the continuing partnership we have with CERT, and they're going to talk about it. The Commonwealth, and I don't steal Michael's thunder, but Commonwealth of Virginia established a way of identifying mandatory state-declared evacuation zones. And it's a little bit complicated when you start getting down to the individual property and individual community level. And so Michael and I, and others, Robert, were thinking about how we might be able to do something that was meaningful, and you could find it at some point in the future when all of a sudden you needed it. And it's not the kind of thing you bury in a drawer. It's the kind of thing you want to be ready and at hand, and Michael finished this idea out and worked with CERT, and they're going to tell you about that and a couple other things Michael will share.
Very good. Mike?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Wheeler, we appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening to discuss Know Your Zone, some emergency management items, and some things with CERT. First thing I'd like to talk about is the Know Your Zone initiative. This has been in discussions for quite a while, however, it started in June, June 1st of this year. And with it, there were some discussions on how we were going to get it out there to the public. After having some meetings with Mr. Wheeler and certain folks within the city, we decided we were going to use stickers, which will be placed on the garbage cans, the city-owned garbage cans of each resident, residents in the city. And I brought an example of the stickers that will be on the garbage cans. So each one of these stickers, there'll be one sticker per garbage can. Also, for the apartments, apartment complexes in the city that do not have garbage cans, we'll be using the door hangers for those folks. Basically, Know Your Zone is to make, to allow everyone in the city, in the eastern part of the state, know where they live and how flooding impacts where they live. In Pecosin specifically, we have two zones, Zone A and Zone B. Zone A is primarily roughly 98% to 99% of the city. Zone B is roughly five, about 500 homes that make up that zone. And I wanted CERT to be here as well, because they're going to assist the city in getting this information out, putting, placing the stickers on the garbage cans, placing the door hangers on the apartment complexes. Also, and I've made some notes here, on some of the streets in Zone B, and they are Emes, Road, Valmore, Dorothy, Dryden, Charles Parish, and Bell's Cove, parts of Yorktown Road, Wernham Farm, Trotters Bridge, parts of Darden, parts of Ferguson, and Lee Avenues. They're pretty much the streets that make up Zone B here in the city of Pecosin. Now, with that being said, in the event of an evacuation, we would get information from the state through VDIMM with recommendations on the evacuation process. And basically, they will, they will call us up, and we'll have discussions, myself, the city manager, the emergency management team, we'll have discussions with them. They will recommend evacuation, evacuation of Zone A, evacuation of Zone B. And basically, this was derived from congestion on the streets, on the roads, on the interstates, as well as the shelters. And other parts of our, of the peninsula, you have Zone C and Zone D. Zone D being the last to be evacuated, Zone A to be the first to be evacuated. So that's basically the way it's set up. I do have a link here that I would like to give everybody, and y'all have it in your packets. It's www.knowyourzoneva.org. I recommend everyone to go to that website and look it over. It's got a map of Pecosin, as well as the other jurisdictions. You can actually see where you're at on that map. Also, I can, if someone really wants to know, has a question, they can call my office at 868-3512, and I can certainly tell them officially where they're located and answer any questions they may have. Requesting resources from the Commonwealth. We have a software that we use called Web EOC. Any resources the city of Pecosin needs, we use that software to request them. And we have done this several times in the past, particularly with getting National Guard resources here in the city. It's very simple to do. I send out a request through Web EOC, I get a call from the Area 5 Coordinator telling me what I'm going to get. The Emergency Management Assistance Compact, or EMAC, that's a little bit broader, and that's typically used from state to state. All the states have MOUs with each other, so, for example, Texas, if they needed any resources from Commonwealth of Virginia, they would utilize that MOU, go through VDIMM. VDIMM would put out a request to all jurisdictions and vice versa. Langley Speedway Parking Lot. We got together with that because we wanted to have an area that the citizens of Pecosin could park their vehicles out of the flood zone, and at the same time, not create traffic issues on personal property. Mr. Wheeler got together with the owner of Langley Speedway, had conversation, and ever since then, we've been using that property, dependent upon the event of the storm. We don't utilize it all the time, but if we have a reason to suspect, or we're getting weather forecasts from the Weather Service saying that we're going to have flooding in the area, and maybe more than nuisance, or even minor, we activate that policy with them. And they're very good to work with, they'll let us know what area of the property to park on, and that's what we do. We make sure our citizens know this through Code Red, city website, and social media. I think it's worked out well, and, you know, for mitigation, it certainly helps the citizen out a great deal with mitigating property damage. I'll be more than happy to entertain any questions that y'all may have at this point.
Randy, you got any follow-up?
Two points. I wanted to thank CERT and SAM specifically. Michael referenced it. The sticker that he showed you, councilmembers, it was kind of small, you can see it from there, but each sticker will have the zone of that particular house. So we'll drop off the A-zone stickers at the A-zone houses, and over the course of the years, as we replace trashcans, they'll come with the correct sticker on it. So it's a good way for it always to be there. Second, with regard to Langley Speedway, each time we have a significant event, we do a hot wash afterwards, which includes the public comment we receive, sometimes business comment, really from a myriad of sources. We wanted to, as Michael said, we wanted to be able to provide a place where the public could go, out of the flood zone to park a car. We do have, in Pecosin, for a significant storm, the only large, and large is a relative word, only parking lots that we really have that are municipally owned outside of potential flood areas is City Hall. And we do allow people to park here, and you'll see storm parking begin to fill up. But we also have an operational need to continue to run both emergency operations and also continuing operations in advance of a storm and after. If you've got a large vehicle, or maybe more than one, you may want to park it two days before, and you may want to, need to leave it two days after. So we try to, we try to provide an alternative beyond City Hall, and it is really the only significant area that is, in this case, is not even public, but it's accessed publicly to allow people to go. Other than that, it's private property. I would also note, and Michael didn't say this, Langley Speedway provides that to us at no cost, as a public service to help us, and I'm very grateful that they do.
Yeah, I'm very grateful to them as well. I hope the citizens will take that into account. There's not many places in Pecosin, when we start evacuating, that there's really above water. And remember that after the storm, when we are in need of making runs from fire department, which may be relocated at times, that tying up city assets for your utility trailer, your boat, or whatever, the best place to have them is at Langley Speedway. And while it's outside the city, it's, it's high ground, and it'll, and we won't be on you to come get it in a drastic hurry, and, but it's just important to understand why we do what we do. Going to these zones, I'm assuming A is not just Pecosin. A is all of the people that use a certain evacuation route, which is decided by, I mean, the evacuation route for the city of Pecosin, Mike, if you can remind me, I think it's up 17, right?
Yes, sir.
So if we share that with some of the lower parts of York County, then A, they may be an A as well. So it's all the people going to a particular exit route, those that may be going to 64, they may have As, but they're still going to be assigned to that route out of here.
That's correct.
So I just want to make sure that everybody understands that it's not just Pecosin's A. There's parts of Hampton that are A, but they may be using a different route. There's parts of Newport News that are probably A, that may be using a different route. That's just the first zone of many.
That's correct.
That's correct. And depending on the nature of the storm, A may not be first.
True.
You know, one of the ways they do it is not just shared access corridors for evacuation, but let's say, any area that's prone to flood with a five-foot tidal surge. So you could have A-zone property in Virginia Beach, just like you could have it in York County or in Hampton. So it's a combination of those things, and then depending upon the track of the storm, the type of storm, you may see an unusual event where something, A is not always first. It could be D, it could be C. Unlikely, but it's, it's possible, based on the specific thing, and when, this is for the, for the Commonwealth to declare essentially a mandatory evacuation of Zone A, and that'll be in all areas. And as Michael said, depending on the nature of the storm, not everyone from Hampton Roads needs to get out of the way of it, and many people can shelter in place, and safely shelter in place, and those people, if they're not sheltering in place, are on the transportation access corridors, or in their shelters and other things. So it's a way to say, there are areas where we may need to evacuate, we want to evacuate those people, want to be able to tell the difference between the people that live in those areas and the people that live in other areas, so.
Okay. Other questions, the council? All right, let me, let me say this, Chief. Bottom line is, you know, it's really up, the citizens need to pay attention to what's, what's being said. The data is out there. I love the idea about putting it on something that, you know, even though we, we kind of chuckle, it is the one piece of equipment that the city basically owns on your property, which is your trashcan, so.
And if I may, Mr. Mayor?
A simple sticker there, let me, let me just kind of, but that simple sticker will tell you where your zone is.
Right.
All the time, and if there are companion pieces that we want to attach there about Langley Speedway in the future, or other things, like your evacuation route, I think that's just the perfect way to keep it so that, hey, you know, where's that stuff from the city? Oh, I know where it is, it's on my trashcan, right? Good idea, I like it, it touches everybody here, and I like the door hangers as well. So, so thank you for your, your thought process on that. Thank you, CERT, for, for all the work that you'll do to get it up and running, and, oh, I'm sorry, you had some questions.
I just wanted to make sure everybody understood, we, we were not going to walk on anybody's property. We're going to time this to where everybody's got their garbage can at the street, CERT's going to ride by, put the sticker on the garbage can, so we're not going to be entering anybody's property or messing with anybody's stuff. So I just wanted to make sure everybody understood that as well.
Very good. Okay, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Gene, I do have one question.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
What are you going to do about the people that have two garbage cans, and they only put one out at the time?
I'll, I'll put as many stickers on them as, if they got two garbage cans, I'll put two stickers on them.
Okay.
Not a problem. And if I run out, I'll call the state and I'll get more.
Very good.
The state never gives us resources for anything, it seems like, but they did pay for these stickers, and they are paying for the door hangers.
All right, very well.
If I could, I was going to say, if I could have a, just a minute, I wanted to offer the council and the people in the audience a little overview of what CERT does for the community.
Sure.
So I'm resident of Pecosin, and I'm the current Vice Chair of the Pecosin Community Emergency Response Team, which we abbreviate as Pecosin CERT. As some of you may well know, and perhaps some of the audience in at home may not be aware, however, that Pecosin CERT is comprised of community-based volunteers that are trained in disaster preparedness and emergency response. CERT training is a nationally-approved program that gives residents the decision-making, organizational, and practical skills to offer safe and immediate assistance to their family members, neighbors, and others while awaiting help from professional responders. The people who go through CERT training have a better understanding of the potential threats to their home, workplace, and community, and learn the steps needed to lessen the effects of these hazards. Once the course is completed successfully, some participants choose to join Pecosin CERT as a responder and make themselves available to assist in disaster response, if requested by the city. Pecosin CERT members may also participate in outreach programs, educating our families, our friends, and our neighbors in preparing properly for these emergencies. The CERT basic course is offered several times a year, and it's available to anyone living or working in Pecosin. However, you must be 18 years of age or older to participate. This training is provided by members of the Pecosin Fire and Rescue and Police Departments, and by certified Pecosin CERT member instructors. Among the topics that we cover are disaster preparedness, fire safety, basic medical treatment, and light search and rescue. Some of our members are also licensed amateur radio operators, and these members in our portal communications trailer may provide backup communications to the city's EOC in the case of emergency. In addition, we offer training opportunities in CPR, chainsaw safety, shelter management, and traffic control. Some of our members even assist with parking at the high school football games. Best of all, all these CERT classes are free. Our next CERT basic class begins in late October and runs for four weeks. If you're interested in this class, or if you'd like to find out more about CERT or emergency preparedness in general, please visit our booth at the Seafood Festival next month. Alternatively, you can find our contact information on the city's website, or from one of these handy pamphlets, which we're going to be leaving in the lobby here, as well as available over at the library. And that's about all. Thank you for your attention.
Hey, thank you for, for pointing that out to us. All right. Next item on the agenda is an audience for visitors. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to address council, we have no public hearings this evening, so now is your time. Okay, seeing none, I'll close the audience for visitors and ask council for approval of the minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the minutes of our regular session of September 11th, 2017.
Second. Okay, motion made in second that we approve the minutes of last meeting, September 11th. Questions or comments? Seeing none, Judy, please.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Canelo.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
All right, very well, the, under new business this evening, the first item is a resolution in support of two transportation projects. One is the Pecosin Avenue sidewalk and crosswalk improvements, and then the With Creek Road repaving. Randy, how would you like to proceed on this?
I would ask we let Ellen present, and then I'll have a couple comments following the end of her presentation, if that's all right. Very well.
Hi, good evening. Tanya's helping me with the PowerPoint while we do that. Thank you. I'm here tonight to give you some information on a funding opportunity that we were notified about this summer, and it required some quick development of projects, one of which was underway at council request. And tonight, what I'm going to do is, going to do is discuss the funding opportunity, provide staff recommendations for two projects that would both be funded using this money, if we indeed get the money, and talk a little bit about how we got to where we are now. VDOT has been tasked by city, or by state law, with going through its coffers and finding additional funding that isn't, that was left over from older projects, or is just sitting there unused, and finding a way to get that out and get that money in the ground in form of construction projects. And tonight, we're talking about urban formula funding. We were notified this summer that the city might be eligible for almost half a million dollars' worth of road construction funding. That would require a match of about $10,000, a little bit more than $10,000. Basically, 98% of a project would be funded with this, these funds that VDOT's told us about, and the city would be responsible for coming up with 2% of the cost. When will we know when we're going to get this money, and how much money we'll get? The Commonwealth Transportation Board will consider projects, and if the projects we've recommended meet their criteria, and VDOT has confirmed that this much money is available, they'll let us know at the end of the calendar year. Basically, we were told money was available this summer. We were notified at September 1st of the deliverables, we would have to provide in order for the funding to be given to us, and we were also given a schedule at that time. So we've been working, coming up with projects and getting the information together that VDOT requires. Okay, so what are the requirements to receive half a million dollars from VDOT in this way? First of all, the projects that are developed have to meet the urban formula funding project requirements, and I'll talk about those in a minute. Not all projects would be eligible for this funding. In order to get the funding, we have to provide a great deal of information to VDOT in the first part of October. We have to have looked at the projects that we're considering and made sure they're feasible. We have to come up with a cost estimate. We have to come up with a schedule using, and we're using the VDOT scheduling tool for that, and we need a resolution of support from council. Once funding has been received, the city has to follow the process for federally-funded projects. That means we have to provide, build more time into the project for federal reviews, there are more agency reviews, more environmental documentation than, say, if you had a project that was funded by a local government. So that tends to stretch out the amount of time it takes to get something in the ground. It also stretches out the amount of, or the amount of money it takes to get it in the ground. And just as an example, the stimulus funding project we did five or six years ago, repaving a portion of, the northern portion of With Creek Road was a federally-funded project, and so we had more paperwork, more reviews to go through on that project. Okay, what qualifies for urban formula funding, which is what this money is? First of all, we could use it to fund a partially-funded existing road construction project. Right now, we don't have that. We have two funded road construction projects. One is the With Creek Widening Project, which is fully funded. The other is a traffic signal upgrade that we just received funding for, and that is also fully funded. So the first category doesn't really apply. New road construction requires knowing that we can actually make that project go, so we need to know a lot about what's going on in the area. We need topography, we need to make sure we own the right of way. So that is also a very difficult project to develop in a short period of time. Walkways on major roads are eligible for funding, and that also aligns with what, with council directives, so that was an area we concentrated on. Also, repaving or improving major roads or intersections is an option. So the most obvious choice was the Pecosin Avenue Sidewalk Project, mainly because we had already started doing the legwork we need to do in order to get this funding. At council's direction last winter, we started doing work on this. We did a survey to determine what, how much right of way we owned outside the paved area. So we know based on the information provided by the surveyor that we have enough to locate a sidewalk there. We've been doing a property record search just to verify that, yes, indeed, we do own that right of way, and to know exactly where it ends. And we've also had started a preliminary cost estimate. What we did in order to get that urban formula funding is we upgraded the project somewhat, need a wider sidewalk, because it's got to meet the federal requirements instead of just meeting local requirements. We increased the cost estimate based on our knowledge of what we have had to do in past federal projects for those additional reviews and that additional, just time involved and paperwork involved. And finally, we extended the schedule out. In order to use the money for the sidewalk project, right now, it looks like the earliest we could begin construction, and by that I mean put out the bids, is summer of 2019. So it takes a little bit longer, but it's funding for a project we need. So what project are we talking about exactly? Oops, excuse me. Okay, we're talking about the Pecosin Avenue Project, beginning in the area where the sidewalk ends, just northwest of the intersection of Pecosin Avenue and Leyton Way and Little Florida Road, which is right here. Okay, so the, the area, the intersection that's called Shipwreck Island is a little bit to the north, or south and east of this picture, so it's over here. Extending the sidewalk along the west side of Pecosin Avenue, around the corner at Cedar Road, to Municipal Park, and then installing crosswalk that would go across the street. We're also looking at upgrading crosswalks along Pecosin Avenue to get to the west side of the street, and hopefully to the middle school, or... of the street, and hopefully to the middle school, or in the middle school crosswalk as well. And what we're talking about there is a flashing crosswalk signs, you know, hand, you know, if you were a pedestrian, you would go up, you'd hit the button, the signs would flash, and then the crosswalks. The idea is there to, is to improve safety for our students who are walking to and from school, or for citizens who are just walking on the street as well. We've already had concerns expressed about drainage, and it makes sense. You need to make sure the pathway from those front yards to that roadside ditch is maintained, so we're also going to be installing side property line culverts there, so we're not going to block anybody's drainage. We're going to retain the roadside ditches, and part of that is just for the expense. Part of it is to make, meet clear zone requirements. If you have a ditch separating a sidewalk from the edge of pavement, you don't need to locate the sidewalk quite as far away from the paved surface in order to meet the safety requirements. And finally, as I said before, we're talking about a five-foot wide sidewalk. So the second project was really developed because we were looking at repaving. The reason we were looking at repaving is because staff is familiar with what you need to do to meet federal requirements on a repaving job, because that, we did that during the stimulus fund project. In addition, repaving has, it's easier to change the limits of your project depending on how much money you have and how much cost. And finally, if we keep the word on top, the work on top of the paved road surface, that preliminary work we have to do, this, the surveying, the locating the utilities, the knowing exactly where the right of way is, is minimized, so we knew that way we would get a project that we could get done in time to meet the VDOT deadlines, which are pretty aggressive. We looked at, I conferred with Public Works, and one area that really needs repaving is With Creek Road. And what we would do is we would start at the intersection of Victory Boulevard in Little Florida and With Creek Road, and head toward Hampton, head southward, to repave. Now, that kind of brings up an obvious question. Why repave when we're about to do a wide widening project, a road widening project there? The reason is because the road needs repaving now. The widening project timetable is extensive. Once again, we're meeting some pretty rigorous requirements to get the project to construction. At the earliest, bids will be, will be solicited in late 2019. By the time construction starts, it'll be in 2020. Construction is starting in Hampton. It's going to take a few years to get that, the Hampton side constructed, the bridge built, and then get to Pecosin. As a result, we're looking at at least five years, if not longer, where that repaving would be in place before it was disturbed or repaved during the With Creek Widening Project. So that's basically the thinking, and why we're recommending that both these projects be considered for this funding. And I'm ready to take questions.
Yeah, Randy, you have something?
A couple of things. First, I just want to thank Ellen primarily, but Tom as well. In, in the timeframe, the normal government projects are conceptualized and brought to this stage is usually in, in, in years, and not several weeks. As Ellen said, she, she said it quickly, because it's just so awkward. We found out exactly what we needed to present in September, and we needed to have a resolution before you by the end of September. So Ellen and others, but particularly Ellen, have spent a great deal of time on this. Had we not already been working on the sidewalk plan, it wouldn't be before you tonight. But we began working on that as a follow-up to your conversations in budget retreat, I think it was in February of last year, and we were going to come back later in the year. And what we're proposing is essentially a sidewalk network that will make it so that you can walk from either of our two schools, either across a, a road on a, on a demand actuated crosswalk, or on a public sidewalk or public property, and get to any of our four schools. And there may be a desire to do a lot more sidewalks in the future. I know there is by many people, but this is a way, at least, to get our schools connected, and, and from there, perhaps do additional things in the future. We do have almost all, I think, of the right of way we need, and if there's an area where we don't have that right of way, we can either acquire voluntarily, or go around it. We can work around it. So this is a, this is a potential to get something done that we've been talking about for years, in a manner that it is affordable, and can be done in a way that should not require any hostile acquisition of, of right of way, and improve people's safety. And it's a nice first step.
Okay, very well. Questions of council?
Just a comment. I understand the importance of sidewalks. I've had a lot of people talk to me about the condition of With Creek here in the recent past, and so I think that's a good idea as well.
Okay. Any, any questions while we've got Ellen standing there?
Just, just one. Ellen, did I understand you right that the repaving of With Creek Road will take place before the sidewalks can start?
Correct. And the reason why is there's not as much engineering and environmental review, because you're, you're staying on top of an already paved surface, as opposed to going out and going through a grassed area or wooded area.
Understand that, but I thought the delay was because the CTB isn't going to give an answer until the end of next year, or this year?
No, let me, let me slow down a little bit. I went through that too fast. I apologize for that.
Hold on a second, I think Randy wants to take that question.
Let me jump in on that. The Commonwealth Transportation Board is expected to act at the end of this calendar year. Because it is federal money going through the state, we have requirements that we wouldn't otherwise have if it was a locally funded project. And so the repaving projects are the simplest of the types of reviews you can do, because it's on top of existing pavement. Everything else is more cumbersome than that, and the processes, state and federal, that we will have to go through in order to qualify to use this money, if approved, based on the VDOT scheduler that we've been asked to use, puts it into 2019. And if it was up to me, and it's not, if you all approved this and the CTB said yes, we'd start the next day. Everything else is pretty much requirements of the people to provide the money to us.
Right. And what we're talking about is the paving in late 2018. The sidewalks would be the, the following year.
Anything else?
What, I guess I've got just a couple of high-level questions. All right, so this is called the urban...
Formula funding, yes.
Is this something that will be, is this a one-year-only thing? Is this something that we expect will be recurring? Any, any forecast on that? I'm not saying it's still the state. Understand that.
My understanding, and Ellen can correct me if I don't fully understand it, is that this is a one-time opportunity that should not be confused with a recurring opportunity. We may have another one-time opportunity come up in the future, but it's not part of a trend. In fact, the, the origins of this money came from the previous With Creek Road Widening Project. There were, there were funds left within that budget, and in going back, as Ellen said, in, at the state level, which was a state project, going through and making sure that they had identified opportunities to repurpose otherwise dormant funds. They identified this, and while it's not ours to use, per se, at least it came out of Pecosin, and we feel if we can put a good project or two up against it, that we stand a, a good chance. And, and VDOT's been working with us to advance that the best they can.
So the, so the takeaway for us is always be working on something that we can throw on the plate when the unanticipated money is, is available.
Yes, sir.
And thank goodness we were doing that on these two projects. So thank you for being lumber enough and prepared to do that, and the short order in which you turned this around. Kind of makes me wonder why we can't get lane miles down for almost 10 years on With Creek Road, right? So that's been funded an awful long time, and you look at us, and it's like, okay, you tell us in September, and we're ready to go. So, so great comparison there.
Gene, can I ask a question?
Yes.
And Ellen or Randy can answer this. I understand this is the urban project, and it's primarily for the streets or sidewalks in addition to the street. I was contacted by one of the citizens, Mr. Bill Freeman, last week, and he talked to me about some things that had happened at one of the NASA research center, I think was then this, down in Hurricane, during Hurricane Katrina. And they had done some things to make their area much more firm and sturdy relative to flooding. They had a lot of flooding in that area, and they had planned in advance to do that. And so should we get more of these funds in the future, having an opportunity, is it possible to look at low roads in Pecosin that frequently overwash in minor flooding events and so forth, that we could simply raise the level of those roads with these kind of funds to get, to, to make areas of Pecosin better accessible for low flooding events and so forth? That's something we might look at, trying to be proactive in, in making our city stronger and, and more capable of handling those kind of flooding events.
Absolutely. Those are the kinds of things we can look at in the future, particularly if we've got a little bit more time. I know Ellen uses the model that she worked on with NASA to, to model infrastructure, things like that. There may come well a time.
Well, he provided me with some information, and I've been able to look at part of it, and when I finish it, he asked me to speak with him, and I intend to do that, and he wants to talk to council about some things that we might possibly do to, to help our city in the future, beyond the area that it is.
Okay. All right. Anything else? Thanks, Ellen. Is somebody prepared to, to make a motion on the resolution on these two transportation projects?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution in support of two transportation projects, Pecosin Avenue sidewalk and crosswalk improvements, and With Creek Road repaving.
Second. Motion made in second that we approve this resolution. Questions or comments for council? Judy, please.
Councilman Canelo.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay, next item under new business is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract for financial advisory services with Davenport Company. Randy?
Mr. Mayor, I could ask Tanya, our finance director, to present this and the next item for your consideration.
Very good.
Absolutely. I'd first like to thank Kyle and Griffin for staying around for this important matter. As you can see from tonight's work session, what Davenport does for the city, very invaluable information that we receive each time as we go out for refunding, as we go out for debt, and what our credit card limit is going forward, so you can make the ultimate decision of how much money for schools, and how much money for our own CIP projects that we have. So with that, I ask that we extend the contract. It's within your right to allow the city manager to have a one-year extension. Doing so is very important, that we have Davenport continue the relationship with the city.
Okay, very well. So is there a motion to move forward with this item?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract for financial advisory services with Davenport and Company, LLC.
Second. Okay, motion made in second that we move forward with this item. Questions or comments by council? Okay, seeing none, Judy, please.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilman Canelo.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you very much. We wish you a safe trip back home tonight, okay? All right, the next item under new business is the resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Bestway Custom Homes to elevate a home with grants, grant funds obtained through flood mitigation assistance, FMA, and ordinance appropriating those grant funds.
Okay. Back in 2015, we received notice from VDOT that we were awarded an FMA grant, which is 100% funded federal grant. There was three homes in consideration for the grant. Unfortunately, two homes have failed out, as you saw in your package. One was because it was already under, it made livable space from the garage, converted it from mid-livable. Oh, I got some title on that one, I apologize. And then the second one was due to the cost benefit. With this grant, you have to meet a certain cost benefit, and we have found, in order to elevate the second home, it was too expensive. So therefore, VDOT determined that grant had to come off. But we are able to move forward with the third grant. We had four bidders. We'd like to go ahead and move forward with Bestway. They were the lowest responsible bidder, and so we'd like to move forward with that, as well as appropriating the funds for the grant.
Okay, questions or comments? Questions?
Mr. Mayor, I just have one. Councilmembers, as, as, if you just temporarily set aside the words Tanya used, when, when I talk about the grants with you over time, I talk about Grants One, Grant Two, and Grant Three. This is Grant Three. It's one house remaining on Grant Three.
And to be fair, it took me a while to figure out which one, two, and three are.
Very good. What I, what I will say to all of staff is, thank you for continuing to represent the homeowners of our city in applying and administering these grants. I will tell you, it is something that we do to harden ourselves from future loss, you know, as a, as a city. It is painful to watch when certain homes are allowed and certain others are not, but I will tell you that it, within the guidelines of what we can administer, we're doing the best job that, absolutely that we can, and it is not this council that deserves the credit, it is, it is the staff. Simply stated, what we will do this evening is, is okay, all of that great work by staff. So the real message here is, thank you to the staff for, for continuing to spend your time amongst all of your other collateral duties in helping the homeowners of the city. So thank you very much. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Bestway Custom Homes Incorporated for the elevation of one home.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made in second that we adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into that contract with Bestway Homes. Questions or comments? Seeing none, Judy, please.
Councilman Canelo.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay, and now a motion on the ordinance?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance making additional appropriations and transfers for fiscal year 2017 and 18 for the elevation of this house.
Second.
Okay, motion made in second that we approve the ordinance allowing us to spend that money or pass that federal grant through the local coffers. So questions or comments? Okay, Judy, please.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilman Canelo.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay, very well. The next item under new business is a resolution making an appointment to the Planning Commission and to the Board of Adjustments and Appeals. Is there a motion to move forward with this from council?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution making appointments to the Planning Commission and the Board of Adjustments and Appeals with the following names inserted. The Western Precinct representatives have nominated Olivia Moore-Gribble, and for the Board of Adjustments and Appeals, Thomas Hartman.
Second.
Okay, motion made in second that we appoint those two individuals to the Planning Commission and to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Questions or comments?
Board of Adjustments.
I'm sorry, Board of Adjustments and Appeals. Thank you for keeping me straight. All right, seeing no comments, I'll ask Judy to call a roll on that.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Canelo.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
All right, and that closes out all the business on the agenda. Comments of the city manager? Randy?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, we really only have one thing this evening. Seems like every time we get together, we're talking about some storm that's either heading towards us or, or hopefully heading past us. And later this week, the remnants of Hurricane Maria will pass off the Virginia coast, taking what is forecast to be a, a very sharp turn to the right, or to the, to the east. But we can anticipate Wednesday or Thursday, some, some potential minor tidal flooding. And in Pecosin, minor tidal flooding isn't something we normally do public announcements about, but anytime it's coupled with something else, we want to make sure there is at least some probabilities, according to what I saw this afternoon, some, some possibility that we may see some tropical force, strength winds tend to... we may see some tropical force, strength winds tend to, somewhere between 10 and 20% probability Wednesday, Thursday. So just take this opportunity along, along with our website and our TV channel and our social networks to let people know what we're seeing, so they can, they can be prepared to protect themselves and their own property, particularly in this instance, on the possibility that there may be some higher-than-average wind. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you for that. Councilman Hux?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two brief comments, the first being the CERT training and the CERT team. I had the occasion to complete the CERT basic training in 2009, found that to be very beneficial as well as enjoyable, and would recommend that to any citizens of Pecosa that desire that knowledge, those skills, and desire a way to become more involved in safeguarding the community in times of need. And I also, last weekend, was able to attend a seminar on the United States Constitution. It was presented by Mr. Gary Porter of the Constitution Leadership Initiative. Found that to be very beneficial, enjoyable as well. I highly recommend that to all citizens, especially those involved with public service.
Very well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for that. Councilman Green?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, the Pecosa Mobile Pantry will be in operation tomorrow at the Old City Hall from 10 to 1. Our host this time is Tabernacle United Methodist Church.
Okay, very well. Councilman Canelo?
Mr. Mayor, just wanted to thank everybody who presented the council tonight, especially Davenport, for such important information, and, and of course, Deputy Chief Bryant and Mr. Straight, engineer, Ms. Roberts, Ms. Tanya O'Connell, and congratulations, and extend our appreciation to the two new board members.
Very well. Councilman Southall?
I'd just like to second the comments that's been made so far, and y'all have a nice week, and we'll see you next meeting.
Okay, very well. Vice Mayor Freeman?
I have no additional as well.
Gene?
Gene?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, you got something else? I'm sorry.
I, I do, I apologize, guy. I'd like to wish my wife a happy birthday. She's 39 years old one more time.
Very well. Happy birthday, Gene. And I will point out that Councilwoman Andrews is not here with us this evening. She is attending what we hope will be a, a clean and healthy birth of, of her granddaughter or grandson, grandchild. And so her, her absenteeism is well-deserved, and we will make sure she's up, up to speed on all the Davenport information. So with that, I have nothing else, and I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So move, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, motion made in second, that we adjourn this meeting. Judy, I'm not even going to ask them for comments.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilman Hux?
Aye.
Councilman Canelo?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt?
Aye.
Motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Very well, and we are adjourned.